Chair, we are recording.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. First off, before I even start calling the meeting to order, are there any time constraints from any commissioners that I'm not aware of right now? Please put that in the chat to me. Let's see what I've got in the chat. Yeah. If you have any time constraints, please let me know directly at this point, and we'll move forward with that. First order business, we can go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Sure. Alderman Cohn? Not present. Alderman Ryan?
I'm here.
I'm here. Present. All right. Commissioner Banton?
Present.
Commissioner Boas?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Commissioner Peoples? Not present. Commissioner Goodson Goodman, sorry.
Present.
Commissioner Keung?
Present.
And Chair Strather?
Present.
And as you said, you have a quorum.
All right. I'd be really in trouble if I wasn't present. With the first order of business is that the minutes were sent out from the last meeting on September 29th, and if you, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes as they are.
So move Bradley.
Second, Banton.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bradley, seconded by Commissioner Banton. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Ryan?
Aye.
We, we lost, we were in the middle of voting. We got the vote for Alderman Ryan. Did we lose the PDA staff?
I don't hear anyone anymore.
They're muted.
Uh oh.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, let's go back to Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Boas?
Stane.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Upstate.
Commissioner Keung?
Aye.
And Chair Strather?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. This evening, we do have a public hearing on the agenda, so at the appropriate time, I will be calling for a motion to open and close that public hearing. First item on the, on the agenda, I have PDA 22 SPD. I'm not sure who's doing that one.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Strather and Commissioners. I'm Scott Ogilvy, City St. Louis Planning and Urban Design Agency, and I'll be presenting the first agenda item, which is a signage plan overlay district. For those of you who've been following the planning commission over the years, you may notice that this is the first time the planning commission has seen a signage plan overlay district, so I'll be spending a little bit of time explaining what that is and the procedure to establish one, and what the recommendation is in this case. So, the submittal here is a resolution submitted through the zoning office to the planning commission for a signage plan overlay district, which was initiated by an applicant. The area is approximately 31 acres. That includes all of the facilities related to the St. Louis City SC MLS team, which will begin playing next year. And the proposal, subject to ordinance 69189, is to establish a signage plan overlay district to govern signage requirements, in order to ensure signage throughout the district is creative, flexible, reflects the unique character and requirements of the soccer campus, supports efficient and intuitive wayfinding for visitors, and is cohesive in its design throughout the district. And the applicant is TKFCLC and Pitch 314, which are the ownership entities for the MLS team. Slide. So this slide just shows the area as it will look when it is fully constructed. If you've, north is to the right, Olive Street is that street for us to the right. If you've been downtown recently, you've seen that the stadium itself is just about finished. If you go farther to the left or to the south on this image, you'll see that the, most of the site work for the practice fields and the other MLS-related activities are complete, but the roadwork to the south is not yet finished. But by sometime next year, this is what the site will look like when completely constructed. Slide. So what is a signage plan overlay district? Is this the first time the planning commission has seen one? It's a zoning tool analogous to a special use district that allows for special signage regulations within a defined geographic area. The, there's a process to establish signage plan overlay districts. That process is located in the comprehensive sign control regulations, which is chapter 26.68. Purpose of a signage plan overlay district is to allow flexibility and creativity for unique and defined areas of the city that meet certain criteria. And the purpose of the signage plan overlay district is to enhance and contribute to a dynamic, high-quality-built environment. Slide. So to apply for one, some of the regulations I'll cover, an applicant may apply to establish an SPD for any property zoned F neighborhood, commercial district or higher with a minimum of two acres. A signage plan overlay district may be approved by ordinance by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis after a recommendation from the planning commission. An SPD is first submitted through the zoning division, which reviews the application for, against the criteria within, in the application, and also for completeness and accuracy. And there's a variety of criteria, some of which I'll cover in the application, that the applicant has to speak to. Slide. Here's just a screen grab of one page of the application, which covers some of the criteria such as theme nodes, activity nodes, mixed-use high-density nodes. I'll go into a little more detail on those. So of course, the theme node, the district's purpose is to host professional soccer games for fans and spectators, and the operation of the professional soccer franchise. The activity node, the area, the stadium area is designed to host large numbers of fans and spectators on game days, to allow them to permeate through the campus on foot between arrival, game day experience, and departure. And the construction of the whole campus area has been closely coordinated with the Brickline Greenway through Great Rivers Greenway, and the city of St. Louis's own investments in Jefferson Avenue, 20th Street project, which is upcoming, and the reconstruction and reconnection of the street grid north of I-64 and east of Jefferson Avenue. And also within the application, the criteria, or the applicant has to demonstrate that the area is a mixed-use high-density node, and the development meets that criteria for entertainment uses along the major street frontages. Slide. So we're going to quickly just go through some context images of the stadium. You'll notice that, in fact, a lot of construction has taken place since these images were taken. We won't talk about them individually, but just so commissioners understand the context, you can just run through those. I'll just note, this image is the parking structure at Olive and 20th, which is under construction and which is part of the district. So the strategic land use plan within the proposed district is entirely specialty mixed-use area, which is defined as areas such as downtown St. Louis, where it is intended that a unique mix of uses be preserved and developed. Slide. Likewise, it all shares one zoning, I Central Business District throughout the proposed SPD. And now, so the next slides are taken from the application itself, and one of the requirements in the application is that the applicant show their actual signage plans. So they have to show sign typologies, locations, sizes. They have to depict the signs on the various buildings within the district, so that we have an understanding of, a clear understanding of what the finished product will look like. So here's a view looking west at the area we used to know as Allo Plaza, the west end of the Gateway Mall, just showing one of the ground signs in the foreground, and then some signage on the stadium itself further back. Slide. There are a number of plans, site plans like this, within the application, that show location of all the primary signage. So both signage that is on the stadium and the other buildings themselves, as well as throughout the campus, so a variety of ground signs that are directional and wayfinding for people using the campus. Slide. This is the area south of Market, which basically shows the practice field area. And one of these, so that those red outlines are a type of signage we've defined within the SPD, which is called a fence screen sign, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. Slide. This is the one pre-existing building on the site, which I think people know as the Upper Limits Building. So that's now being renovated as office space for MLS and is included within the district. More perspective images showing kind of the layers of signage that'll be on the stadium. So, you know, the, the signage that is up high will be visible from a greater distance, highlight the name of the stadium, and as you get closer, there's gate signage and wayfinding signage, and more directional kind of fine-grained signage to lead people to various sections of the stadium. So this shows some of the entryway signage, and then some of the vertical monument signs that direct people throughout the campus. This again is a perspective from the Allo Plaza area. On the right, you'll see one of the ground signs. The white box on that sign is an electronic message center or a screen. So that's one of the signage types that's permitted, although the size of those screens is regulated and limited by the SPD. Slide. More entryway signage showing kind of the typical crest typology that's used throughout the campus a lot, and just various different buildings and uses of different entryways. So you see a ticket office sign, and then some other signage that will be dedicated to team sponsors. Slide. On top of the building, there are two relatively large roof signs, which are not visible from the ground, but would be visible from aerial shots of games. So those are there, although while they're large, they have kind of a minimal, I think, impact. They may be visible from some upper stories of some buildings downtown, but for most, most of the time, those will not be visible except from the air. The aspects of the SPD are actually addressed and referenced within the design downtown STL Neighborhood Plan, which is of course, an adopted neighborhood plan by the planning commission. Recommendations from that plan include, create large-scale graphic wayfinding signage at key locations, such as the MLS stadium. And the addition of the MLS stadium presents an opportunity to reimagine the terminus of the Gateway Mall as a new front door to downtown west, improving what is currently called Allo Plaza. And signage, or something like a signage plan overlay district, is actually contemplated within the redevelopment ordinance for the soccer stadium redevelopment plan from ordinance 71109. The city shall support and assist the redeveloper in developing and seeking the necessary approvals for a signage program acceptable to the redeveloper. Slide. So the, the purpose of this signage plan overlay district is to allow overall flexibility and creativity in signage, in a way that will enhance district cohesiveness, wayfinding, and user experience. It permits creative use of signage to enhance district identity. It allows flexibility in the size and type of signage to support the contemporary architectural aesthetic of the district. It defines and allows additional types of signage, which are not defined within the underlying comprehensive sign control regulations. It allows for future adjustments to individual signage without Board of Adjustment hearings every time a new signage permit is pulled. But individual signs are still all permitted through both the zoning and building divisions. Slide. So I'm going to kind of summarize some of the key regulatory factors that are in the proposed district. So the district would allow additional signage, square footage, particularly in the stadium area of the district, so north of Market Street. It allows those two large roof signs on the stadium, which we saw in an earlier slide. It allows small electronic message centers that are a component of larger wayfinding signs. It allows a large supergraphic sign if it is an integral component of the parking structure facade. Supergraphic, supergraphic sign is something that is not addressed in the underlying, underlying signage regulations, but it's sort of a contemporary type of signage, which might, might use like a different finish across a metal screen on a facade to depict a logo over a large area, but is a little different than sort of traditional signage that's bolted onto, you know, the exterior of a building. Allows for a variety of types of signs and locations of signs across the district with more specific rules by district area. It permits ground signs, which we saw in earlier slides, which are otherwise only allowed for parking lots in the I zoning district downtown. And those ground signs are kind of a key wayfinding component for the district, so it's important that those are permitted. And without something like this SPD, all of those would individually require a zoning variance. It allows various types of ground signs, but it limits their size and height. And it allows a portion of that practice field fence, which surrounds the three practice fields south of Market, to contain signage, but, but not the full fence line. Next slide. There are also things which in the district which would be prohibited. So it prohibits what are, what are called general outdoor advertising devices in the zoning code, which are billboards, prohibits new billboards. It prohibits large electronic message centers, so only those small pedestrian-scale message centers are, which are a component of larger signs are allowed. It limits the number and square footage of signs, which vary in illumination. So that would be signs that are not screens or electronic message centers, but might have lighting that can change color or intensity. It limits the height of ground-based signs, so it doesn't allow for tall monument signs. Those are signs usually on a pole, which are elevated, which we usually associate with like gas stations or fast food restaurants. It sets limits on the total sign square footage of each facade and street frontage. And if, if there are items that are not addressed specifically in the SPD, the existing underlying comprehensive sign control regulations still control those elements. So those are still in play if we don't address something specifically within the SPD. Slide. That is the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. Bill Keeling, who's representing the team, is also here, as well as Jim Reddington, who has worked on the signage package. And I believe Mary Hart Burton and Dylan Mosier are here from the zoning office.
All right. Thank you, Scott. As everybody knows, I'll go through the list of commissioners for questions. I just need to check with David, is this, are we, is this the item that needs public hearing?
I'm not aware of that. Is that true? Yes, this one. So this is a zoning change. This was posted in the City Journal 15 days plus in advance of tonight's hearing. It was also posted onsite around the perimeter of the site, and this is the item that needs a public hearing.
Okay, that's what I would be sure of. So with that, I will first, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I said I can verify what Scott said is true and correct. It has been published and noticed.
All right. Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. She rubber-stamped it for us. With that, the first thing, I'll go through the list of commissioners, and we'll go for the public hearing. Commissioner Cohen, I'm not sure you're on yet. Oh, you are. Okay. Any questions or concerns at this point?
Yeah, my apologies. I had some technical difficulties signing in. Scott, I'm curious, does this regulate the size of the signage as well, and like where it can be placed?
Yeah, to, to an extent. Sorry, I finished up. Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, I was just, the last part of that was particularly when it's in the public right-of-way, or is this just for private property purposes?
Yeah, this is just on private property. So if you saw the district map, it includes those rights-of-way, because it has to cross those borders, but it doesn't control signage within the right-of-way. So any signage that ended up within the right-of-way, or on that Allo Park parcel, which is part of the Gateway Mall and is owned by the city of St. Louis, all of that signage would have to be permitted through a typical process. If it's permitted signage, it's permitted through the Board of Public Service, through like an encroachment permit. And if it's temporary signage on a city-owned light pole or something, it's permitted through the Streets Department. They may reference this, especially if it's permanent signage, but this isn't the controlling document for right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. And then from a, just regulating like size and whatnot on private structures, is that part of this as well?
Yeah, so there, there are maximums, square footage maximums. They are, especially north of Market, they're larger than the underlying regulations would permit. However, I think it's important to kind of note that there's a lot of layers of signage to this. So those large signs, it's not going to all be one sign. It's more that the cumulative number of signs for entrances and the main stadium signage, and those, those wayfinding signs that are kind of pedestrian scale, you know, the ticketing, all the gate signs, the section signs, those, you can see kind of in the middle of the slide, like that logo. When you add all this together, it, it exceeds what would be allowed. But I think, so the specific signage package that they've submitted, it's all very in scale with the scale of the building, and I think the needs of getting people through the campus. And so, you know, our, our recommendation is that it's, it's appropriately designed.
And then, just from a lighting perspective, I, I, you mentioned that this would include, what was that? Small electronic messages, and then large supergraphic signs that are integral components to the parking structure. So can you just give an example of what a large supergraphic sign was, that's integral to a parking structure facade?
Sure. So actually, can I address the electronic message center first, just because this slide? So that white box on that sign, that's an electronic message center, so that's a screen. And so those are limited to that scale. They're not allowed to be, you know, like billboard-sized or even larger than is depicted there. So they're kind of along, they're similar to those Ike kiosks that are placed kind of in the right-of-way, more or less. So that's a limit on electronic message centers. So a supergraphic sign, it's really kind of a contemporary signage style, where you might take the materials of a building or part of a facade, and I don't know that we have a slide that depicts this, but you might take like a metal facade, or a metal screen that's on the exterior of a structure like the parking garage, that underneath is kind of a concrete structure. And then the texture of the metal, or the finish of the metal, might have a different finish, which allows it to depict, you know, a logo or a message. But it's, it's different than, it's not a screen, and it's not something that is producing its own.
So it's not something that's illuminated from behind. It would be, it would have to be lit from in front, type of a thing?
Correct. Yeah. And within the specific regulations, we define that it has to be integral to the structure. So it's, it's something that's essentially a permanent part of the facade.
Okay. And then, just from a prohibition perspective, I did see, let me see if I have it correct here, the limits on square footage and illumination, which you and I have had this conversation over the years, just around light pollution in neighborhoods. Like even if this is downtown, you know, if there are signs that are facing north or south, or, you know, even eastward towards more residential properties, light pollution could certainly be, you know, an issue. So what, what are the kind of restrictions on lumens for, you know, those types of signs?
Sure. So the, the underlying signage control regulations are what apply there. We didn't write different ones for this SPD. I can't really speak to those directly, but it's possible that Mary or Dylan or Jim Reddington, who's on the call, could perhaps speak to that.
I would recognize either one of them at this time, if they want to respond.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, the question was.
Go for it. I was just asking, with respect to the prohibition on the size and, you know, illumination of signs, what, what exactly is that? And Scott was explaining that this doesn't really differ from what our current restrictions are, but, you know, he didn't have the specifics in terms of what they are currently.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what the specifics are, but I don't, I don't see this as becoming, you know, more lit. I mean, in, I think the fields, the soccer fields south of Market are going to produce a lot of light, and probably a little bit of spillage, you know, out of the, the practice field area. But the rest of, you know, the signage and the lighting on, in the, in the district as a whole, I don't see that as, as being, contributing to, in a major way, light pollution.
Okay. So this is specific to signs, not the field lights or things like this. It's a regulation of the signs specifically, and the size and illumination of signs.
Right.
So, you know, as an example, we have billboards that are LED, and they are obnoxiously bright. And, you know, as a result of that, we passed an ordinance that regulated the lumens, I'll call them, I want to call them decibels, lumens of the, you know, that those are able to, you know, shine at this point. You know, this being a sporting complex, I'm, you know, I'm sure that they're going to, you know, want to do something along the lines of, I guess what they did in Ballpark Village with that high-rise, the new high-rise that has the kind of, you know, illuminated TV or whatever it is at the top of it. You know, so I, I'm just trying to get an understanding of what that would look like, in terms of what the current regulations are, and then what the process would be. I would imagine that would follow a similar process to what we have on the books right now.
Alderman, yes. But just to speak to, so Ballpark Village has a version of an SPD that was written specifically to allow for those signs at Ballpark Village. And so those do exceed what is allowed for under the underlying regulations. Here, those things are really limited in size, so nothing that would be a part, so, sort of two things. So the signage package that they've submitted doesn't depict those things. And then second, this, they can have lighted signs, certainly, and they could have lighted signs that change color, but they are limited in size, and they would not be close to the scale of what's at Ballpark Village, or what's at the Horseshoe Casino, or Lumiere Place Hotel. So it would be smaller, certainly, than those.
If I may, this is Dylan Mosier from the zoning office. And sorry, Scott, did I, did I interrupt you? Were you finished?
No, no. Continue, please.
Yeah. To, to answer your question, Alderman Cohen, you know, the zoning code, it doesn't, it doesn't regulate the amount of sign, or amount of like light pollution, or light exposure, or, you know, in terms of lumens, something that can actually be, you know, measured in that way. I mean, largely the zoning code and what this document will do is, is part of sort of the initial review process. I mean, largely the zoning code and, and what this document will do is, is part of sort of the initial review process of signs, whereas the brightness of an illuminated sign, you know, is kind of more of an active use of the sign as an ongoing thing. So I mean, I can't speak to it perf, you know, totally perfectly because I don't really work in this, but I mean, we do have like nuisance processes, as everyone on this call knows and everything. And I think that's more how something like that, you know, is currently handled across the entire city with signs. And, 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 you know, I would say we will again. I mean, there is some language in some of the definition of illuminated sign and exposed light source that talk about, you know, you know, signs should prevent, you know, light projecting upon public right of ways or streets with such intensity as to cause glare or impair a vision to any person upon any public right of way. So it's, it's, it's sort of vague. But I mean, you know, it does say, hey, you, you should not, you know, cause disruption to the traffic flow or, or folks, pedestrians walking around and whatnot. But, you know, we don't have a, a direct measurable amount of lumens that can be, you know, shined across a property line or anything like that under the standard zoning code.
So Dylan, let me, this is the chair. Just want to be sure I'm understanding. Those, those zoning guidelines come out of your office, am I correct?
Correct, yeah. Chapter twenty-six of the municipal code, the zoning code.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, Alderman?
That's all the questions that I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Orion.
Well, thank you. My, my colleague Alderman Cohen, I think, covered basically everything that I was going to ask. So thank you.
All right. Commissioner Banton.
Uh, just one question. Since this district is a budding Interstate sixty-four, is there any, anything in this signage district in terms of the regulation that would conflict with any MoDOT signage requirements? Do we know?
No. So a couple, I think, important factors are that billboards, new, new billboards are prohibited in this district. There is an existing billboard on the existing building, which is, is allowed to stay as a continuing non-conforming use as long as it's maintained there. But new billboards are not permitted. And with the exception of that fence screen sign, which is, it's sort of long and low. So it's the height of the fence that wraps those, the practice fields. They're not allowed additional signage area over the underlying signage code south of Market. So between Market and the highway frontage. So I think the area where you, where you will see the most signage and the most lighted signage is the stadium itself, but not as much near the highway.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we weren't creating an issue for ourselves. No further questions from me.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley.
Yeah, so I'm just curious to ask the question. So Kiku Obata did the signage plan. Can you tell me who sealed the signage, signage plan and what the discipline was? I can't, I see a seal on page thirty-eight, but I can't read it. Microscopically.
Jim, can you address that?
Can you pull that page up?
I, so I think Mr. Bradley may be looking at the resolution itself, which has the full application. So I don't, I don't think that page is in the presentation.
Yeah, I don't, unless it was the signed contractor. I don't know, Bill, if you know what, what he's referring to.
Yeah, I'm not certain what's being referred to. I don't believe a seal from an engineer or whatever is necessarily required for the planning overlay district itself. Now, when, when an application then went into the Building Division for the actual sign to go up, at that point, a seal would be required. So the passage of this district signs can just go up. We're still going to have to go down to the Building Division and then work through the Building Division to actually get permission for that. But we may, may be able to skip having to go to the Board of Adjustment for certain variances. Like today, we were down there for, I think it was twenty-eight separate signs at the Board of Adjustment today. And, and that won't have to happen anymore, but we'll still have to go to the Building Division.
What you're saying, Bill, is that this isn't a final design yet? And so therefore, this is a preliminary and the seal's not been placed on it yet.
Correct. What you see in front of you is not intended to be used for the purpose of applying for a permit.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that when we get to that point, that obviously goes to buildings that it's by Kiku Obata, who obviously is the best of the best. So I have no issue there. I just see a seal drawing and I was looking at to try to figure out who it was and I, it's too small, I can't read it. But that's fine. I'll take that as the answer for my question. No further questions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Goodman?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cunyong?
Hi. So I don't know if this would be in the plan. I, I was just curious about anyone with a visual or hearing disability. I think this would probably relate most to wayfinding signage and if anything like that would be addressed or if that doesn't usually go into these type of overlay plans.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. I think the underlying signage code actually prohibits signage from emitting noise. And that is still in effect. I don't really want to speculate on the design because we didn't really address that in the development of this, but if Mr. Keeling or Mr. Reddington have any comments on that.
I'll let Mr. Reddington. I don't believe any of these emits sound, but.
No, the, these signs do not emit any sound. There has been some discussion about augmenting the wayfinding in the stadium and around the district with, you know, the potential to use a mobile, like a mobile phone to help people with disabilities. But that's not yet been implemented. It's, at this point, it's just been a discussion.
I guess then, um, is that something we should be wanting to incorporate into this? I guess that would be a question for Scott and the planning team.
I think that might kind of exceed the purpose of what this tool is designed for as a, as a planning tool. I do think that there are probably technology solutions, some of which Jim might be thinking of, that could address some of those features. It's possible that that is a level of kind of detail that exceeds what we're typically looking at in kind of a, a planning overlay though.
Okay. And then Jim and Bill, are you all then working with our Office on the Disabled for any of the ideation around how we can address folks with disabilities?
I can, I can say that I know the design team has worked closely with David Newberger on access into the stadium and that. I'm not sure as to the purview of his office relating to any of the signage. But you know, if it requires a permit, it'll be routed through David if, if, if it is within his purview. But yeah, we work closely on the whole stadium.
And we, we followed ADA guidelines for wayfinding messaging. So, you know, to make sure that it's legible for, you know, people that have vision impairment. So, you know, all of the signage meets the ADA in terms of size and legibility.
This is Dylan again from zoning. I mean, I would say that I, I didn't personally review the, you know, the building permit for the construction of the stadium itself. But I, I do work in that office. So I would say that, you know, working with the Office of the Disabled should have been, and I assume, you know, confidently that it was part of that review process to make sure that all, you know, all folks of all abilities are accommodated.
Is that it, Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Prior, prior to me opening public hearing, if you are online and you want to make any comments, I would ask that you add your name to the chat. And I will recognize anyone at that point before opening it. Scott, I do have a question from, as a commissioner. Why is it that this plan is just coming to us at this stage of the game as opposed to a much earlier stage in the planning and process?
I think it took quite a while actually to develop all the signage. So there's, there's a lot of signage within the district. And the applicant went through a few iterations of defining the district boundaries. And then the application itself asked for a lot of detail in terms of how many signs and where they're going to be and the size of those signs. So it was something that, I mean, for instance, I think the, the naming rights were not necessarily resolved until relatively recently. So, so some of that signage was probably kind of up in the air until recently. And then there's a little bit of lead time just in, you know, us developing a report and the notice requirements and, you know, those legal requirements, reviewing the, the legal description of the district, all of those kinds of things. But we've, we've definitely been working with the applicant for a few months to get it to this point.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate that. But keeping in mind, knowing the construction time, lead time, design time that's required. And now as said, when they're, as it, close to the line, then you're asking for approval. I'm a little concerned about that process and that timeline. But that's just, that's an editorial on my behalf at this point.
If, if I could add just, just one small thing is that the, the SPD, you know, regulates the initial signage, but in a large campus area like this, there's certainly going to be signage that has to change and evolve over time. And so I think it'll help to have the set of rules and regulations in place as those things happen. Both to prevent kind of every new sign from having to go to the Board of Adjustment, which I don't think the Board of Adjustment wants or the zoning office wants and is cumbersome for the applicant. But also to, to regulate, like, let's say twenty years from now, they want to put a huge TV screen on the outside of the building. We have a planning document that does not make that recommendation and that can guide the Board of Adjustment if, you know, a future owner does apply for that type of variance. So I think it has, it has value moving forward beyond kind of an opening day.
And I appreciate that, but let's not talk about future owners in sports teams right now. With that, I will.
The children of the current.
I will entertain a motion to open public hearing.
I'll move Bradley.
Second, Boaz.
I have a motion by Bradley, a second by Commissioner Boaz. Call for vote.
Alderman Cohen. Alderman Cohen?
I'm here. Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cunyong?
Aye.
And Chair Stroud?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Okay, with that, the public hearing is notified as opened. I will entertain any comment, questions at this point from the public, keeping in mind I will monitor any time of those statements. I'm not seeing at this point any requests. I just want to be sure, PDA staff, are you seeing any that I'm not aware of?
Jonathan is indicating that he's not seeing any requests in the chat.
All right. I will call once for requests, call twice for requests, call three times for public requests and hearing none. The, I make, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner. Who moved? I'm sorry.
I did.
Oh, Commissioner Cunyong and seconded by.
Orion.
Commissioner Ryan, Alderman Ryan, call for vote.
Previous role.
Call for previous role. Hearing any objections? Hearing no objections, previous role passes. The public hearing is now closed. With that, Scott, if you would like to recoup or re, review the recommendation that you would like the commissioners to move on.
Certainly. So PDA staff finds that the proposed signage plan overlay district for the ten parcels listed on your screen to be in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan and the design downtown STL neighborhood plan. PDA staff finds that the SPD application meets the criteria and procedure for establishment of an SPD within the comprehensive sign control regulations. And PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed St. Louis City SC signage plan overlay district. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Second, Banton.
It's been moved.
Previous role.
It's been moved. Call for vote first. It's been moved by Commissioner Alderman Orion, seconded by Commissioner Banton. I've had a call for previous role. Hearing any objections? Hearing no objections, it passes with previous role. Thank you. I appreciate Alderman Cohen being on top of things there.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, the next, next item I believe is twenty-three, twenty-two.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening all. First, I'd like to thank the commissioners and acknowledge your commitment to this commission to start off with.
Can you just announce yourself for the recording?
My name is Andrea Gajak. I'm a planner with PDA.
Thank you, Andrea.
Yes. So, um, tonight I'm going to refresh us with a brief presentation on the Chapter ninety-nine blighting study and redevelopment plan developed by SLDC in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood. The plan is, the site is, next slide, is the Metropolitan Village Apartments and, which provides housing for elderly and disabled folks. And the developer proposes to renovate a hundred and forty-seven units ranging from one to two bedrooms and add additional parking for guests to the north. And this plan does not provide for the use of eminent domain and recommends fifteen years of tax abatement. Okay, and go. So the proposed, yeah. Okay, so PDA staff finds that the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan and the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood plan. And PDA staff recommends the approval of the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan. And I think Eric is on, on the line with, if you have questions for questions.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll entertain any questions from the commissioner, Commissioner Cohen.
No questions.
Commissioner Ryan?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Banton?
No questions.
Commissioner Boaz?
No questions.
Commissioner Bradley?
No questions.
Commissioner Goodman?
No question.
Commissioner Cunyong?
No question.
No questions from the chair. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, should I say it again?
Do I hear a motion from the commission?
I've moved to approve, Banton.
Second, Boaz.
It's been moved by Commissioner Banton, seconded by Commissioner Goodman. Call for vote.
Previous role.
Call for previous role. Hearing any, any objections to previous role? Hearing no objections, the, the motion passes with previous role. Thank you very much on that item.
Thank you.
The next item I have is twenty-four, twenty-two. Is that correct?
That's correct, Chair.
All right. And who's presenting?
I am. Hi, good evening. Jonathan Roper, a senior planner with the Planning and Urban Design Agency with the City of St. Louis. Now go ahead and continue. So at the last meeting, we briefly dove into this item as well, just for, just to kind of review it. So as Andrea did, I'll do a little bit longer representation, but just to kind of go through what we discussed last week and to answer any questions or comments and the petitioner, Mr. Justin Unger is on the line as well. So with that, we have a redevelopment plan and a blighting study for your review and approval. It's a six acre site which totals 11 existing residential multifamily units ranging from two to three two to three bedrooms, and they're looking to renovate this. It totals about 146 units and the developer is still Steel Hill Vale LLC. Is the proposed developer. Next slide please. And just a tour around the site, surrounding the site, just to the east is some business, business, industrial or just commercial areas and also a, next slide please. And also just to the south and east is another multifamily complex. To the west of the site on the top screen is the light industrial area where you can see a long concrete wall and also to the north of the site is also industrial, which is a city owned property. And also to the south, which is on the bottom of the screen, you can see some residential houses and also more industrial across the street of Hamilton there. Next slide. And just in the north of the site, going up Goodfellow Avenue, there's a city property on the left side and along with Goodfellow leads up to Natural Bridge eventually where it has more commercial properties. Next slide. And the Strategic Land Use Plan designates this area as a neighborhood preservation area. So as there are existing residences there, the sloop would say to preserve, so renovations of the existing units would be in compliance with the sloop. And just to draw you to an area, because staff is asking for one condition to be placed on here. The area which is highlighted in yellow shows the existing apartment complex. To the south of that or just below is also a pocket of residential along with the Barrett Brothers Parks and across the street is more also a mix of residential and commercial. So next slide. The area in question is Zone J Industrial District, which outright only permits residential if 40% of more of the block is already residential. So in this case, there would be residential would be allowed under the condition, the existing zoning. However, there's also under the Jade District, there are a lot of land use entitlements that are more industrial nature that might conflict with residential. So that's why staff feels that the property should be, not through this petition or resolution, but the petitioner should look to rezone the property to a residential zoning district in the future that's more appropriate for the development. Next slide please. And with that, staff is open to any questions, but staff does find that 3401 Goodfellow Boulevard is an area that is in compliance with the Strategic Land Use Plan and therefore would recommend approval of the blighting study and redevelopment plan, also with the condition that the area be changed from Jade Industrial District to a more residential zone.
All right, with your presentation, just one simple question. The last part you made, zoning change from Jade to industrial to a residential, does that still mean it needs to come back to, to the planning and zoning commission?
Eventually, yes. A rezoning, there would actually, yeah. But not tonight though.
I was just wondering why it was in the recommendation that if it still has come back. With that, I'll entertain any questions from the commissioner. I'll do an open mic if there's any commissioners with questions.
I'm just curious, this is Commissioner Bradley. So they're going to do 11 residential buildings. They're going to do 146 units. My question is, is there any site work that they're proposing on the exterior of those buildings? Any site enhancements over what's there today?
I'll refrain most of the question to the developer. However, I would say that in the development redevelopment plan, it is noted to have some exterior site work being some screening fencing or trees or bushes and stuff like that around the perimeter. But for particularly about the exterior of the buildings and stuff, I would give that over to Mr. Unger.
And who is the developer on line?
Yeah, good evening commissioners. This is Justin Unger with Steel Properties.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, so yeah, we do have some landscaping work included in the proposed rehabilitation plan, which also includes adding some trees, fencing the site exterior. Also, you know, some additional landscaping work and then some paving work for the existing parking lots and driveway. You know, I'd say most in particular in, with regard to site work is adding an exterior fence and entry gates as well as a guard shack to the property to enhance the security at the property, which we see as a deficiency in place currently.
Any other questions, Commissioner Bradley? Okay, thank you. Any other questions from open, from commissioners at this point?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a one quick question. I'm curious to hear from Jonathan an answer to your original question on why, why we're seeing this now and not with the additional zoning change recommendation?
Sure. So in the process, so currently speaking, they are permitted to, without even tax incentives, they can go in for a building permit tomorrow and probably do the renovations without any tax incentives or any rezoning, which would not require a board, but more so just the city departments. The, under the tax and the incentives request, staff does look at not only the strategic plan, but usually the zoning, the underlying zoning as well, just in the review of it. And the, the steps to kind of, what precedes the, this board and when it comes to tax incentives is the LCRA board. So their board does pass the plans, then the planning commission, and then goes to the Board of Aldermen. And a case of a rezoning, there's just a simple application to the zoning office, which then is transferred to PDA and the planning commission for their recommendations onto the Board of Aldermen. So in this particular case, as they were only requesting a tax incentives that PDA found it during this process and at this point, you know, they could continue on with the project, but we think for the long term, it would probably be better, more beneficial to the residents to be rezoned to a different zoning. So it's nothing that really, well, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
With that, as I said, and I'm really a little questioned by the language, the way it's written. It says that we recommend approval of blighting study and recommend and redevelopment plan with condition a zoning change from Jade to an undesigned zone. So I'm a little, you know, that's a little nebula, there's a little restriction there. So that's why there's a question in that. However, I will entertain a motion to, to approve as recommended.
And Chair, just to clarify that residential zone, the, just because PDA staff didn't want to right now and not knowing, let's say, like there, there, there are certain zones, let's say C, D, or E that allow certain densities of residential. So we actually don't have a recommendation as to which one would fit most appropriately at this point. And we did not want to prematurely say, oh, it should be this district and then find later that, oh, when they're building something, it just conflicted and we should have went with B versus A or C versus A or something. So it was a little premature for us to actually determine which category would be most appropriate.
Right, I, and I do understand that, that I would have recommended not including with condition as part of the recommendation. So, but however, I will entertain a motion if there is one from the commission.
I'll move Alderman Cone.
Second, Alderman Boaz.
It's been moved.
Sorry, I promoted myself, Commissioner Boaz.
Well, it's been moved by Alderman Cone, seconded by Commissioner Boaz, call for vote.
Previous role.
I've heard a call for previous role, any objections? Hearing no objections, it passes with previous role.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Alderman Cone and future Alderman Boaz. With that, I think the next number is 25-22. And who's presenting? I'm not sure.
Good evening commissioners. My name is Tyler Wilson. I'm presenting a site tonight. That off, okay. You all get to enjoy my nice blonde hair. So I have a site, 490 North Kings Highway Boulevard, also on the corner of McPherson Avenue. This is 1.02 acres in the Central West End neighborhood for this blighting and redevelopment plan. So the current existing use of this building is two unoccupied commercial buildings and a vacant parking lot. The proposal for this site is the renovation of the existing building and the demolition of a two-family building and the construction of a five-story apartment on top of the existing building. And in addition to that, the development will have 118 units ranging from studio to two bedrooms above a 127 space parking garage at the cost of approximately 33.5 million. And the petitioner is Michael Hamburg with Peer Property Group. He may or may not be here today. Cool, yes.
I am here.
Sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Hamburg.
Yes, so this site is within the specialty mixed use area of the Strategic Land Use Plan. Those are areas like downtown St. Louis, where it is intended that a unique mix of uses be preserved and developed. Here we have a few shots of the site. This is looking at the subject site on the 4900 block of McPherson Avenue. Here we are looking east at that same building from North Kings Highway Boulevard. And here we are looking back again from McPherson Avenue, south at the building at the existing parking lot. So here we have, if you look at the inset map on the bottom right, the existing building to be redeveloped is marked with the red circle. And so what we have here is a sky view looking northwest and you can see highlighted are several adjacent institutional buildings featured in the area. These are not included in the redevelopment area, but are just significant to the area. Here we have another sky view looking over Kings Highway. Highlighted in blue are private single-family residential sections of the neighborhood. And then finally, still looking over our subject site, highlighted in yellow are mixed-use properties blending commercial and residential uses nearby. So we find this redevelopment area to be declared as blighted and the proposed redevelopment plan is in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan. We recommend approval of the proposed redevelopment and would like to open up to any questions.
All right, thank you, Tyler. I'll allow Michael, I'm sorry, Mr. Last Name, Hamburg, if you have any comments you want to make prior to questionings.
You know, just appreciate your consideration here. You know, this project has been in planning for a long time. Our costs have continued to kind of increase as we've been through that process, but we're really excited to have a plan to both kind of save this building and, you know, make it a nice addition and a good gateway into the Central West End. So would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cone, Alderman Cone?
No questions.
Alderman Narion?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Banton?
Just to comment, I, I want to commend the project team. I think it's great when these projects use existing buildings like this in a creative way. So I'm excited, excited to see this project move forward.
Commissioner Boaz?
No questions, and I agree with Commissioner Banton.
Commissioner Bradley?
No questions.
Commissioner Goodman? Yeah, I think we lost Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Kyung?
No question.
With that, the chair has no questions either. If you were to review your recommendation, I'll entertain a motion after that.
Okay, PDA staff recommends approval of this proposed redevelopment request.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved Alderman Cone.
Second, Narion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Call for vote.
Previous role.
Objection to previous role, we've lost the commissioner.
Awesome. Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Narion?
Aye.
Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman, I take it is not present. Commissioner Kyung?
Aye.
And Chair Strather?
Aye.
And motion passes with all present voting aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you. The next, next item I have is number 2722. Who's making that presentation?
Meeting, planning commissioners, this is the last redevelopment plan that we'll be reviewing for tonight. And as you can see, this redevelopment, oh, and my name is Alexa Seda and I'm a senior planner with the city's planning and urban design agency for those who might be on the line watching and not familiar with me yet. So last redevelopment plan for this evening, as you can see, this redevelopment plan is located in the, along the Dr. Martha Luther King Corridor. It is a redevelopment plan that's just over, I mean, just a little under 400 acres in size and spans across six neighborhoods, which you see on the screen. There are various uses within the redevelopment plan area. And also I wanted to note that this is a proactive redevelopment plan, meaning that there isn't a prospective developer. But the goal is to stimulate and attract developers to this area. And I also wanted to note that SLDC just launched their economic justice plan that was announced at the mayor's luncheon last week on September 28th. And if you were to review or read that plan, the Dr. Martha Luther King Corridor is a demonstration area in which they want to spend their resources, making sure that this is developed from Grant all the way to Kingling. I hope I'm pronouncing that street correctly. Next slide please. As you will see, there are multiple sloop categories within the redevelopment area. So to the west along Kings Highway, you see some regional commercial. And then if you can see MLK, that dotted line there, you'll find as we go east that there is neighborhood commercial, a little bit of opportunity area. Sprinkled then a mix in there is institutional preservation. And then also as we move away from the corridor north and south, we have a mixture of neighborhood development and neighborhood preservation areas. Next slide. I will kind of go quickly through this slides because if you look at your resolution packet and at the blighting report, they have done a good job just showing the level of blight within this area. And so as you can see here, this is in the Ville neighborhood. These are existing buildings on Dr. Martha Luther King Drive. And then also we have the Greaterville. This is a single-family residence on 3900 Cope Brillant. Next slide please. In the Lewis Place neighborhood, you see vacancy and also a, well vacant land and then also a vacant home. And then in the Vandevander neighborhood at 4,000 Evans, there's also a slew of vacant land and vacant buildings. And here's the Kingsway East neighborhood also demonstrating blighted buildings along the, an important corridor such as the Dr. Martha Luther King. And then in the Fountain Park neighborhood, those are some homes that are also in need of, of investment. And so in summary, staff does recommend for the area to be declared blighted and in conformity with the strategic land use plan designations that you see on the screen. And PDA staff does recommend approval of the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan. I am happy to answer any questions and I believe we may have Zach on the line who can also answer some questions.
Thank you, Alexa. With that, I'll do an open mic for any, all, any commissioners that have questions at this point. Since there's no specific development.
Chairman, this is Commissioner Banton. Question for staff, what type of community engagement, if any, was done for this redevelopment plan?
For the redevelopment plan itself, I would say the type of engagement is reflected in the economic justice plan. And so in the economic justice plan, they show sort of like the data that they use and the surveys that they put out into the community. I think it was November 15th of last year to December 31st that asked questions. I also participated in that survey as just a regular resident and it kind of showed, um, it was that, you're trying to understand like where SLDC should prioritize their programming and policies. But also I will defer to Zach if he's on the line.
We'll recognize Zach if there's any response to that.
No, Alexa's totally correct on that. We had many public meetings, outreach surveys for the, not just this area, but city block.
We had many public meetings, outreach surveys for the, not just this area, but city blocks.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm hearing is that there is no specific outreach done for this particular area or plan. It was part of a larger citywide effort.
Correct, yes.
Is that typical for these types of things? I feel like for past redevelopment plans for areas like this, there's been outreach.
Not, not outreach for the generic plan like this. We following type of neighborhood plans that were adopted, so we basically build off of those.
Commissioner Banton, did that answer the question or?
Yeah, it answered the question, thank you.
Can I piggyback off of Commissioner Banton's question? Sorry, Zach, if I'm, did I hear that you were? Let me just say my question, is there a neighborhood plan for this area that helps guide choosing this corridor specifically?
Part of the, part of the plan is covered by a neighborhood plan.
And so part of the Vanda Vendor, Vanda Vendor section, there's the North Central Plan that's there. And so it calls for redevelopment of the Dr. Martha Luther King corridor.
Sorry, can you repeat that, Alexa?
Yeah, so it just, Scott, if we could kind of go back a couple slides just to the MLK section. So kind of where you see that the purple area, the, in the Vanda Vendor neighborhood, a portion of this redevelopment area is covered by the North Central Plan. And some, and the goals of the North Central Plan is to promote business and support creation and retention of different creative art industries and promote entrepreneurship along the Dr. Martha Luther King corridor for that section there.
So when you say that section, where does it?
So I want to say it's, it's the Vanda Vendor, so it's Dr. Martha Luther King would be the northern border. And then to the east, it's Vanda Vendor. And then to the west, it's about Taylor and then to Page. And I think the, if we go to the first slide, that might show it a little bit better where it says Vanda Vendor neighborhood. Like it's, it's in small lettering, sorry, that is not the best depiction of the neighborhood, but that section there. And to the western border, that street is Taylor. Where Sarah, can't see, hold on.
Does, does that address your questions, Commissioner Cone?
It does. I guess a generous, I have another question to follow up mine. How did we select this part of MLK? What, I, I recognize that, of course, there's a part of a neighborhood plan. I also recognize there's economic justice action plan, but just wanting to see how we chose the geography in particular.
The older person, the two older people there are in, have this stretch were very supportive of this, of this, this plan. And that's where a good chunk of the boundaries were created from Alderman of the Fourth Ward, Miss Alderman Evans and Alderman Todd. And then we looked, also looked at LRA properties where a, a large amount of them. And during, in this stretch of, from Van Verre to Kings Highway, there's a predominant amount of LRA property. So that's why we're focusing in this area.
Thank you.
Quick, quick question, do we have any idea of the breakdown between occupied and unoccupied buildings in this, in this stretch?
I don't have that object, but oh, go ahead, Zach.
No, we, we may have in the rezone plan. We have a map of all the LRA properties in this area. Also vacant lots versus occupy, or vacant lots versus structures too, this should be in the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, if you take a look at the resolution packet on page twenty-four, it's labeled at the bottom. It's just say LRA properties and it shows LRA property buildings and then the LRA properties that are lots. So it's a light green color and then a darker green.
I see it now, thank you so much.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, one more quick follow-up question. So following up from my previous question, so I, I love the idea of being proactive and SLDC being proactive and to create redevelopment in these areas of the city that need it. However, with these redevelopment plans come regulations regarding the plan itself. And given that there was recently a neighborhood plan done for part of this area, do we have any letters of support or from the organizations that were involved in that plan? Or is it simply two aldermen that are, that are urging SLDC to do this?
Well, I will kind of jump in, but I think I see Zach, you were going to mute yourself.
No, yeah, we do not go against anything the plan has recommended, the neighborhood plan. The future of all these plans in the future moving forward is when the neighborhood plan is rolled out, our redevelopment plans will mirror the neighborhood plans. So as other neighborhood plans are produced, we will follow their lead because those are, those, the playing department and it's the boots on the ground. So it's not something we will not go against, but what they produced for this neighborhood plan, we, we basically mirrored it. We are not challenging it or changing from the neighborhood plan.
Right, but was this shared at all with any of the organizations or group that was involved in the neighborhood plan or any of the neighborhood organizations in that area? To solicit feedback or simply let them know it's coming?
No, it was not, because we do not, we're not changing anything from the neighborhood plan. We also are not, there's no Emma Domain powers here. If anything, we're giving them a tool for redevelopment, so as, we're allowing for abatement up to twenty-five years.
Right, but it's a tool that comes with restrictions and I get that you're not changing anything in regards to the neighborhood plan, but seems to me that the neighbor shouldn't, should have at least some, if not some say, then at least knowledge that this is what the city is doing.
Correct, but the, the restrictions would be like no adult bookstores or things like along those lines. So it's nothing too crazy of restrictions we're putting on in the area.
I understand, but.
And Commissioner Banter, you raised an important point about this and what I will note is that this is also the North Central Plan. We did adopt it as a topical plan, so it doesn't hold the same sort of weight as if it were adopted as a supplement to the comprehensive plan. But we will do better next time to make sure that residents within the area, regardless of the type of plan that it is, knows about things like this.
Thank you, it's not necessarily a problem with the plan or document itself, it's, it's a comment on the process.
Exactly, I understand.
No, and I fully understand, we at SLDC are hiring neighborhood managers that will go out into the neighborhood to do more field work and neighborhood meetings and along those lines is still at the early stages. But that should be rolled out in the next few months, so.
Thank you, no further comments or questions.
Okay, I will agree with Commissioner Banton. Too many times are we doing things without the input or at least the express information being shared. And there's some transparency issues that need to be forthcoming for any resident that, that sits in that area or has plans that we don't know about. And they should have at least the full knowledge of what's going on in city government under our purview or anybody else's at that point. Not saying that we have a question about the plan, but it's about the shared information. With that, I would entertain, if Alexa, if you just recap your recommendation, please.
Yeah, so in summary, staff does recommend the area to be declared blighted in compliance with the strategic land use plan and also recommends approval of the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved Alderman Cone.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Boas.
It's been moved by Alderman Cone, seconded by Commissioner Boas. Call for previous roll, hearing any objection. Hearing objection, call for vote, please, roll call vote. All right, Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Nay.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Epstein.
Commissioner Goodman. Oh, that's where we lost, Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
And Chair Strather.
Aye.
And the motion does pass with five ayes. What else? Oh, and one.
Thank you commissioners.
Thank you. I would just simply say as a life, as a natural lifelong citizen of the city, there are a couple of photos and that have really broke my heart to where we have come on some of those stretches because I spent some time in one of those doors and it, it, it just shakes me right now that that's where we've gotten to. With that, the next item, Jonathan, you have?
Yes, Chairman, and I would say just to the previous comments about more public engagement, that is not going on deaf ears and we will look to different report next time about our public engagement. So, thank you. We have three delegated items, two of them are over a million dollars but under one acre. And the other is under a million dollars and under one acre. And those were two summaries for provide for you for the ones over one million dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions or comments the commission may have at this time.
I'll entertain any questions from commissioners at this time. Hearing none, they continue forward.
Thank you. And that is all from PDA at this point.
Okay, currently our next meeting is, any new business that I'm not aware of?
Uh, no new business.
All right, with that, the next scheduled meeting is November ninth. Once again, you'll get notice of that and I will commend the staff on getting us information in a timely fashion in the last few meetings so that we had access to it to review. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved Bradley.
Second Cone.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you for, thank you for your participation, everyone. Have a good, a good weekend, productive week, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you and good night.